Good morning. Welcome to the Gadsden City Council meeting. I'd like to remind everyone to please make sure that all cell phones are turned to the all for vibrate position. Also, please be advised, our city council meetings are broadcast on Comcast Channel 99, AT&amp;T U-verse, and the City of Gadsden YouTube channel. This meeting of the Gadsden City Council will now come to order. The Chair calls on City Clerk Ivan Nelson for the roll call.
Councilwoman Latham, Councilman Smith, Councilman Avery, Councilman Back, Councilman Wilson, Councilwoman Minatra, and Councilman Robinson. We have a quorum present, and our meeting is open for business. I'm going to ask Councilwoman Latham to lead the invocation. Please stand or remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
Let us pray. Father God, we come to you today just to say thank you. Thank you that you have given us another day of life, health, and strength, Lord God, and we ask now that you would lead us and guide us in the things that you have assigned to our hands to do. We thank you for what you have done. We thank you for what you're doing and for what you're going to do. We ask your continued blessings upon our city, upon our mayor, and upon our council, and for everyone that makes up the City of Gadsden. We thank you for wisdom. We thank you for knowledge. We thank you for your instruction and your guidance. We pray this prayer in your Son Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the work session in council meetings held on April 30th.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to approve minutes.
Item six, the Chair will entertain a motion to ratify payment of account for the week of April 26 through May 2nd.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts.
Item seven is held for proclamations and commendations. We have none today. Item eight is unfinished business. We have none today, so we'll move to item nine. It's a resolution approving honorary designation of Sunnyvale Drive as Gray Ray Drive. This is in honor of Lonzie Gray and Vernia Gray Ray, 102-year-old twin siblings who are among the oldest living residents of the state of Alabama. The city council supports this designation and considers it a great privilege and honor to install honorary signs on Sunnyvale Drive in the City of Gadsden. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution. Is there any discussion? All right, clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
We would like to welcome the twins here today, and Councilman Larry Avery does have a special presentation that he's going to do at this time, and he's going to go down to the podium. And if you will, if Lonzie Gray and Vernia Gray Ray, if you could make your way forward down here to where Councilman Avery is, he would like to present you with a momentum, I guess, or memento, I should say, excuse me, if it's possible to do that. If not, you're fine to stay where you are. At 102 years old, you get to do whatever you want to do. This is your day. Man, you look great. Both of y'all do. My goodness.
So again, a special day for these two young men and women in our community who have served us well and who have, God has blessed, to see 102 years old. I'll go straight into the reading. They have heard this before, but for the city, here we go. Dear Lonzie and Vernia, I hope this message finds you well. I am thrilled to share with you some incredible uplifting news. On April 23rd, 2024, our beloved Lonzie Gray and Vernia Gray Ray will be making a significant milestone, their 102nd birthday. Born in the heart of Chambers County, Alabama, the Grays are the second born amongst their siblings to their mother. Their journey began in Chambers County and eventually led them to Gadsden, Alabama, where they have called here home since, early years. Lonzie and Vernia hold a unique legacy as the sole survivors of their nuclear family. Their perseverance, resilience, and unwavering spirit have been an inspiration to all who have had the privilege to know them. Vernia dedicated her life to enriching young minds through her service in the Gadsden City School System, notably at General Forrest Middle School. Lonzie, on the other hand, contributed his talents and hard work to the local steel plant until his well-deserved retirement. To honor and celebrate this extraordinary couple, our Larry Avery District Three City Councilmen present an honorary dedication to the brother and sister both. On this day, this joyful occasion is one of many ways to show our love and appreciation for their remarkable journey. That's not all, but I'll stop there because that's all that needed to be said. And then, this is the, one of the signs here. I really thank and appreciate the council for voting this in with, as just, again, a small gesture for, again, 102 years. So maybe some of us will get there as well. We'll get the same.
I've just got a few more years.
Anything you all would like to say?
Well, Brad B. Yep. Couple of years, I went through a whole lot. Happy to share the day.
Yes, I've been there.
Well, I told him I hope we see him a few more years as well. So we're excited. Great health, as you can see. They have received awards from, of course, Mayor Ford, presentation from there. I think Mayor Guyton, Mayor Means, and I think the list goes on. Governor Ivy. So again, we're ready for presidential medals to come down.
Yes.
Again, 102 years, this is remarkable. And then again, they're great health. I think all the family, if my, can the family come up and take a picture?
Sure. Yeah. If you're in the family, please come up. Michael's going to get a picture for our social media. So we're proud to have.
We can just.
I guess we're probably over there with their inability to, yeah, in the wheelchair. It might be better over there if we can squeeze them in.
Well, now let you, you want to hold that?
With the advancements in modern medicine.
I'm not sure you're up to 100. I just got to make it to like 60 to, and I think they'll be able to just replace anything in you by that point.
That's right.
I have a different set of goals.
Well, thank you all again for being here today. Congratulations to the twins, 102 years old. That is a remarkable feat. And I heard Ms. Vernia mention God and giving credit to the Lord. So amen. I'm sure we all couldn't agree more. Can't do anything without the Lord. So thank you, ma'am. Thank you, sir. All right, that was section number nine. We'll move to item 10, which is new business. And I believe we have one item today that we're going to get our money worth out of you today, Councilman Avery. You're going to bring this up for us, right?
Yes, Mr. President. So this is a request from Engineering Department, resolution awarding bid number 3561-2024 herbicide project. EDKO LLC is in the amount of $271,939.20. This herbicide will be conducted, ditch application, roadside applications, roadside along waterways only, center medians, winter spray, interchanges parks and facilities. So this is needed to begin the work as soon as possible as relates to those areas that I just previously mentioned, amassing that we consider this today.
Second. All right. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today as an item of new business, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Passage, please. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
All right, that was our only new business. We'll go to section 11, department reports, committees, boards. I know we have one. I think Mark Golden is here to share some weather information with us from the EMA office.
Morning, everyone.
Morning, Mark.
Director Mummerk sends his regards. He's on a special project today at the fire training tower. So anyway, it's not all gloom and doom, but we are going to have some severe weather possibilities the next three days. The biggest threat is going to come Thursday overnight, actually, early Thursday morning. We're expecting the possibility of 60 mile per hour winds and hail up to quarter size. The Weather Service has said that these storms appear to be non-tornatic, but they still won't rule out the possibility of a rogue tornado somewhere. That's more of a liability thing, I guess. All three days, starting this afternoon through Thursday, we can expect severe weather. The biggest threat is going to be Thursday morning, early. So the complete forecast is on the last page. It looks like the weekend's going to be beautiful, highs in the mid 70s Saturday and Sunday. So Mother's Day will be perfect, should be, anyway. The timing of this, all of this may be adjusted as we get closer to the event, but at this time, we're not really anticipating any problems unless we get wind. So that's all I have.
Well, thank you for that. Appreciate you keeping us informed.
Yes, sir. And the rainfall amount through this whole thing is like an inch to an inch and a half. So we're not going to have any flooding problems either. Shouldn't have any flooding problems. Thank you all. Have a great day.
Thanks, Mark. Thank you. You too. Any other department reports or committees? All right, seeing none, we'll move to item 12, which is citizen requests. First on our list is Pastor Willie Simmons. Pastor Simmons is going to come speak about CDP 2000 Project Bread Basket.
Good morning. It's still morning. Morning, council.
Good morning.
We, what I'm really here about is to inform everybody about what we're doing with Project Bread Basket. This project will be something that will be able to bring to East Gadsden the ability to connect with Family Success, Family Life, Family Success Center, the Health Department, DHR, Gadsden State Community College, Edouard County Food Bank, New Beginning Group Home, United Way, and bring all of those together in a relationship with the people. We don't really have anything over there that really helps the homeless and those that are in transition and those that are needing food. People really have to go across town, warming centers and things like that. There's nothing in that part of town, but we're hoping for it to be even greater than that in that it will be able to centralize and bring together places like Way of the Cross and the Freedom Center. These are places that I feel like we, as a city, need to be really concerned with if we want great success. I mean, I'm excited about all that our mayor and our council are doing. I want us to not lose sight of those that are the least among us. I think that if we are, if we're connected in relationship, we can help people move from where they are to the next level if we just develop the relationship with them. We have plenty of places, plenty of opportunities in place. Gadsden State Steel Center, we have that. We have the Family Success Center. We have DHR. We have all of that that's there. But I believe that through the Bread Basket, we're going to be able to develop and cultivate the relationship with the people that are there on the ground, right there walking with knapsacks on their back and needing a place to be. And hear about the weather like this. If you understand that, you'll look and see people transitioning all over East Gadsden with those little backpacks on their back. They're looking for somewhere to stay. They know the weather's coming in too. They're looking for food. They're looking for shelter. They're looking for things like that. But we don't want to just give them a handout. That can develop a mentality of, I'm always looking to you to give me something. You owe me something. But what we want to do is put in place something that will also give them a hand up in the connection with the Skill Center and the different things like that. So if we develop the relationship with them, we can connect them to the right places. Amen?
Amen.
Amen. You know, I often wondered, like I said, about the scripture that says, who's sin? That this man was blind, and Jesus reported no man's sin. He said, this was that my Father would be glorified. Well, there are always going to be poor among us. There are always going to be people struggling among us, and there'll always be people that have. But this is a place where we're supposed to connect that, and you can see the glory of God. I believe if we want to be really that champion city that we want to be, if we really want to be that unique place where God's presence can really sit in, I think we've got to turn with that that we have, and we got to pay attention to those that don't, and we got to let God be seen there. Anytime you see the need meeting that which we have, the things that we have meeting the places where they are needed, I think you're going to see God. I really think you're going to see the presence of God. So explaining to the community what we've done, one thing is, we're going to have to take that building down. We're going to have to take the one that we have down, and we're going to bring up a new building. I know that sounds like, why can't you use what's already there? But the money that it is going to take in order to restore that building will be almost as much as what you would need for a new building. That's what I found, $250,000 just to put a new roof on the building. And it doesn't make sense. So what we're going to do is redo that building, and not redo that building, but rebuild a brand-new building facing Sixth East Broad and give it the appearance that our community deserves and the people that we're going to serve deserve. Amen?
Amen.
So I'm asking for help. You know, I'm asking for the body of Christ, help first. I'm asking that churches come together and look at the need, the things that are needed. I'm asking the city to come together to do it, and I'm asking our community to rise up and do it. Businessmen, we can give, and we can give to this so that we can bring forth the resource that we will be able to help those that are the least among us, not only with a handout, but also a hand up. Amen?
Amen.
So just explaining where we are right now, that's all I'm doing. It's just saying, you've seen a big hole in the wall. You've seen the building, and we got started, looked like a house of fire. But after we got, after we started talking about it and looking at it, it was going to cost just as much. When I took it to Mr. Thrasher, Trent Thrasher, let me say his name properly, and he looked at it, he said, you come out just as good going with a new building and knowing everything is working and functioning in it. And the amount that he gave us was comparable to what it would cost to rehab that building. So there again, I'm asking for help on all three mountains, from the body of Christ, the city, and the business sector. East Gadsden, we got to rise up, and we got to begin to do some things that need to be done for the people that are walking. I'm seeing people walking in our community that I've never seen before. People are coming from everywhere there. I've seen people that weren't raised there that are there, and I want them. I'm hungry for them. I want the people that don't have. I want them around because we can, I believe that we can serve them properly.
Thank you so much for your time, for your vision, and for your heart, Pastor Simmons.
Yes.
Thank you.
I'd like to thank our Councilman, Councilman Latham, Councilman Smith, over there in my area, for being a blessing to us always. Our mayor always has been a blessing. I thank God for our board members, Mr. Porch and Brother Reed. I thank him, he's back there for having embarrassed him too much, and Brother White right here. We're on board. We want you to get on board with us. God bless you.
Thank you, sir.
All right.
All right. Yeah, give a round of applause. Thank you. Our next speaker that is asked to come is Robert Avery, and his topic is American Rescue Plan Funds.
Good morning.
Morning.
Let me first say to my neighbors, for over 50 of those 102 years, they've been my neighbors. Plus, some of my family members are in that family now. So just want to congratulate them on getting the street honorer renamed. So I really appreciate that. Thank the council for that. I come before you guys again. I've been here on a number of occasions dealing with the American Rescue Plan Funds on behalf of the Northeast Alabama Black Chamber. I've requested funding. As you remember, I gave everybody a copy of our outline as to what we wanted to do. We asked for $2.4 million when we first made that request for a period of six years. I mean, for four years, because it ends in '26, 2026, you have to spend those funds. We had plans laid out to help businesses and entities such as churches on East Broad Street, Tuscaloosa Avenue, Ewing Avenue, Forest Avenue, Wall Street. And we named a number of those places. Those funds could be used for. And it's interesting, and I think I might have said this before to this city, if you had a nonprofit chodo, you could donate money to these type of causes. But of course, the city didn't see fit to do that. But the reason I'm here this morning is I asked the mayor to give us a copy of the budget, the monies that has been spent. As you know, when President Biden came into office, he passed a resolution, an executive order. And I gave you guys a copy of that executive order. I'm going to read it out again. The executive order is Executive Order 139.85. And it talked about how federal dollars should be spent, that the feds give out, that a certain percentage of it has to go to certain neighborhoods, certain communities, and certain census tracts. I also gave you a copy of the Treasury Department regulations on spending those dollars. And I've been here several times trying to get information as to how we spent the $24 million or so, or how we've allocated the $24 million that we received through the American Rescue Plan. I have yet to get that information. I sent a request a few weeks ago. I gave you guys, and I say you guys, I gave this administration time to come up and give us a certified copy of how those funds have been spent. They gave us some flimsy paper about six or eight months ago as to how the money had been spent and what was obligated. And I think you all said, or they told you all, that they could not go back and make amendments to that budget because the previous administration had budgeted those funds, allocated them. Yet, and still, this council had gone back and changed the allocations through amendments to that budget. So I want you guys to know that you've done that. I also asked that I get a certified copy of the audit of those funds, because you just went through an audit process. The auditors should be through with your audit. You know, I spent 20-some years here, so I know how the process work. I asked for a copy of that. I wanted a certified copy either from the auditors, the finance director, or the mayor signing off on it. I gave them to this day, because I knew I was going to be here, because next week I'll be someplace else. I'm serious about those funds being spent in this community, right. I'm serious about these funds not being misused. I'm going to do some things I don't want to do, because this is my city and I love it, but also want to make sure this administration do what's right for the people. With that, I'll shut up. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Avery. All right, item 13 is remarks by mayor and council. Mayor's out today. We'll go with Councilwoman Latham. Will you start us off in District One, please?
Thank you, President Back. I just want to say congratulations to the Gray and Ray Twins and the celebration of 102 years and the renaming of the street and dedicating it to them. To God be the glory for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Smith?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. President. Again, I echo the same. Congratulations to the twins. May God continue to bless you and strengthen you. As the number of your days be shown, so shall your strength be. That's my prayer for you all. Thank you for the families here supporting. Thank you, Councilman Avery and the council, for approving that street. What a blessing that is. Just want to say to Pastor Simmons, thank you so much for the vision for the Bread Basket. The one meeting that we did have was just an amazing turnout, which shows great support for what you're trying to do. And again, it's going to be something that's going to benefit the whole city. And as stated in the work session, you have our support to do whatever we are able to do. So we're excited about that partnership as well. Thank you, Mr. Avery, for bringing to our attention again about those ARP funds. So thank you for coming today as well. Just want to thank the council. Thank you, President Back, and our mayor, and all the department heads for all that you do. Thank you.
Thanks, Councilman. Councilman Avery?
Thank you, Mr. President. Want to give a heads up that Carver Park is getting some work done to it as we get ready to prepare for our summer activities in summer. So you're going to see a lot of movement back there behind Carver, so we're excited about that. There are some hazard spots that we want to get addressed, and so they are being addressed. Also, our grain room looking for new, some renovating going there. We got some pool tables in on yesterday and some other items and some things on the way. Want to thank all of the employees that work out there. The facilities is being used. We thank all of our young people that are going out there and really just taking advantage of the great community center that we do have there. And so I'm excited about what is transitioning there, what's happening. Also, excited about the potential summer program that'll be coming there soon. So we're just waiting on some information to go through, and then we'll come back and announce that so people can get signed up, get their kids signed up. And we have a summer program there at Carver. I want to shout out these two young ladies because they do a very hard work. They're in our school systems with this program, and they are just really moving. It's called, it's the Downtown Dance Conservatory. It's Lindsey Rickles McRae and Azelia, her daughter McRae. They do a lot of, a lot of work in our community as it relates to the art of dancing. They take kids over to Parrot's and all different types, different places. But it's the teaching of art of dancing, and I've noticed just having girls, how they take on this art, and it becomes a love, and it becomes, it's very, a great skill set. So I wanted to shout them out. They are in District Three. They're there at the Cultural Arts Center here downtown. So if you have a child that is interested in dance, I introduce those two names to you, and you go to downtown Mary G. Harden Center for Cultural Arts, and they will direct you to how to sign up, the cost, and things of that nature. A big shout out to all of the 2024 graduates. Continue to make a mark, not only in your individual, family, and community life, but continue to press towards the mark and in continuance education. continue to press towards the mark and in continuance education. The HayGastin app, if you've paid attention to the city website, or Facebook website, as well as my web, Facebook, the HayGastin app has rolled out. What is the HayGastin app? HayGastin app is an app that you can download to your phone and that you can, you can take a picture and report issues that you are having a problem with in your community. For an example, dumping, trash, and things of that nature, animals, whatever it is, that app would then direct it to the proper department heads, and those department heads will keep a note on, to you, on what's going on, is it being addressed, has it been addressed, things of that nature. Within your scope of your community, it also alerts someone else that has already put that information in or put something else different in, and it's a great communication, have been a great communication app thus far as relates to reporting issues, not being able to get someone on the phone, and whether it's your councilperson or councilwoman or whatever, a councilman, councilwoman, department head calling the city hall, this app has seemed to be very well-received thus far in getting things addressed. So, again, HayGastin is the app, it's free. Go try it out, sign up, and I'm sure that you will like it, and it would be a great need with at least trying to address some of the issues that we have collectively in our communities. And my final remarks, again, to thank the Gray Ray and the family members and friends that came out today, to honor them again with this small gesture, I don't think that we can do enough for the amount of years. I'm reminded of something that my grandmother used to say, one of my grandmothers used to say is that I have forgot, I think she said, "I have forgotten more things that you can remember or that you know." And so, I can just imagine the amount of years of the thoughts and the things that you have went through and you have seen, and you have overcome, and I am so grateful to be able to stand on your shoulders, to sit in this seat here today, along with, on the shoulders of Mr. Avery and so many others, to sit in this seat today, standing on the shoulders of you all, of all that you have overcome and made it to where that I can have this opportunity to sit here and represent you in the manner that I do. So, I thank you all for coming, thank you for taking the time in your day to be here. I'm so grateful to see you and looking forward to the journey that God has for you of many more years to come. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Wilson? I don't have anything, Mr. President. All right, Councilwoman Minatra?
I am just reminded that today is the National Teacher Appreciation Day. We have some great teachers in our school systems, and they work really hard. They not only provide the support and the learning, a lot of them give not just their time, but their own money to make their classrooms bigger, better. So, we appreciate everything that they do and any opportunity that we have to say thank you, we should take it. So, thank you.
Thank you for bringing that up. Thanks. Councilman Robertson?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just wanted to say, the weather did clear out this past weekend, we had a good turnout for All on the Rocks at Uncle Little Falls, it was packed out up there. Appreciate everybody coming out. Congratulations to Mr. Gray and Mrs. Gray Ray on y'all's accomplishment in life, that's amazing, 102 years, 102 more, let's go for it. And I'd like to say Happy Mother's Day to my mom and all the moms out there this coming Sunday. I know my mom checks us out every now and then on the Channel One, so Happy Mother's Day, Mom. See you Sunday.
Oh, great. Good. I want to also echo the comments to the Gray and the Gray Ray families. Thank you for being here and just congratulations on 102 years, and we're proud to honor you today here at the city council meeting. Wish you many more years of happiness and good health. Want to remind everybody, this Saturday at the AMP, which is the amphitheater, we're having a parrot head party. It's Jimmy Buffett group that does Jimmy Buffett music and others that'll be there. A lot of tickets have been sold, there's still tickets available, so you can go to the Gaston City website and look for ticket opportunities there. Also want to, I'm glad you brought up National Teacher Day, that had slipped my mind, not only is my wife a elementary school teacher, but my son, or our son and our daughter-in-law are elementary school teachers. So, I don't want to miss an opportunity to thank my, to all the teachers, but especially my wife and son and daughter-in-law. Last but not least, we are having our monthly special called Council Meeting at 1:30 this afternoon here in this room, it's the nuisance and abatement hearing. We do those now on a monthly basis as opposed to an every-week basis. It just works better that way, a little more efficient for everybody. So, with that being said, we will be adjourned.